It is now two o'clock in Brazos County. The Brazos County Commissioners' Court hearing for a workshop session for a presentation, discussion of the Texas Association of County Services. So this meeting is now called to order, and I recognize Jennifer.
Hello.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thanks for coming, Judge and Commissioners. We have multiple TAC representatives here to kind of give you an overview of what we've now called Mini TAC Day, because that was just a nickname we came up with. So with that said, I'll go ahead and turn it over.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. It's nice to see you all. Got some new faces up here. I am Lisa McKegg, and I'm your Risk Management Consultant, and I work in our Risk Management Pool. In my role, what I do with the county is I work with you on all of your liability coverages, property coverages, and workers' compensation coverage. And I have the pleasure of working alongside with Jennifer and also Leslie, who I just saw in the back here. So thank you for having us this afternoon. We hope that we bring you a lot of good information, answer any questions that you may have. So I'm gonna cover... Thank you. I'm actually also...Clarissa and I are gonna tag-team here. Rita Coaches is your County Relation Officer, and she could not be with us today. She had a family matter going on. And so we're gonna cover the TAC services, an overview for you about our organization. We were founded in 1969 by these associations, which include your county judges and commissioners, County and District Clerks Association, the Treasurers, Justice of the Peace and Constables, the Sheriffs Association, Tax Assessor Collectors, Texas Association of County Auditors, and the District and County Attorneys Association. All of our Board of Directors that we have in our...we have different boards. We have our big tag board. We also have unemployment. We have our Health and Employee Benefits Pool, the Risk Management Pool Board of Directors, along with CIRA Board of Directors. All of those are made up of county officials, elected officials, appointed officials. For this year, for the TAC Big Board of Directors, I like to always call them our Big Board, Tim Addison, who is Yocum County Commissioner, is our president. Cindy Brown will be coming in in 2026 as our president. She's the Denton County Treasurer. And Randy Riggs, who is in my hometown county, McLennan County, is the Vice President. Other members of the board, I won't read all of those to you, but that is who your Tag Board of Directors is made up of. And again, as you can see, there's multiple offices that are covered there. We have Constable Commissioners, County Criminal District Clerk, County Judge, Justice of Peace, Dallas County Clerk. The sheriffs are also represented in their Tax Assessor Collector and County Auditor. This is our prior board members that are still very active with us. Nathan Craddock is Tom Green County Auditor. He's our immediate past president. Renee Couch is the Kamau County Treasurer, and she is also our NACO representative. And you are probably familiar with J.D. Clark, the Wise County Judge. He is also the NACO president. So we're super excited to have Texas represented well with NACO this year. Susan Redford is our TAC Executive Director. She's the former Ector County Judge. And we also have Stephanie Moreno. She's the former Bee County Judge, and she is the TAC Associate Executive Director. Not sure if you've all had the opportunity to meet them yet. I'm not...well, y'all...some of you were at our Legislative Conference, I believe. I saw you. So you may have had the opportunity to visit with them. With our legislative support, we have Carolyn Love, who you probably got to see, presenting at the Legislative Conference. Our legislative support team keep you engaged, keep you informed of what's going on. And then we have the whole legislative support team, which hopefully you're familiar with your groups if they're in there, because we have different legislative teams that are Yes, I forgot. I'm sorry. I kept going. Did you want to go back to that slide? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to really... All right. Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. My name is Clarissa Messenger. I'm the Employee Benefits Consultant for the East Territory. As Lisa mentioned, we're gonna kind of tag-team this presentation here today. And so this is also a part of our legislative team. We have a core legislative group. And so when legislators are faced with issues that may affect local government, they want to hear from local elected officials and appointed officials like you all. And so as a county official, there's numerous ways to participate in the legislative process when joining the core legislative group. So as a member, you can help by contacting your local legislators in person, providing testimony, or supplying TAC with your opinions regarding the legislation that will impact county government, specifically your county. And so if you are interested in joining, we do have a QR code up there. And Pete Winkler on the legislative team, he is great and can assist you with joining that program. The goal of this is to cultivate relationships among legislators, their staff, and county officials, both at the Capitol and in your district. They also help to foster community outreach between county officials and the public. And of course, they garner quick feedback on the proposed legislation. So again, if you are interested in signing up for this group, that QR code is listed there for you. We also have our education team.
Clarissa, nobody got their phone out yet.
Oh, I will go back.
No.
What are y'all doing? Well, you know what? I will let you take a copy of this presentation, think about it a little bit, and you'll have that QR code for you when you're ready. All right. The next one. So we do have our TAC Education and Training Team. This is directed by Haley Clicks. So some of you, if you've attended a TAC conference, have probably ran into Haley or some of the members on her team. We just wrapped up our annual Legislative Conference, so I know that some of y'all attended that one. Generally, that's gonna be at the end of August, and that's a great conference to just stay up to date with what's happening in the legislator within county government as well. One of my favorites is County Management and Risk Conference. We collaborate with the Risk Management and the Health and Employee Benefits Pool Services Team, and we put on a conference for management, whether that's be risk management, risk control within the county. And then we also have presentations and sessions on benefits and wellness workshops. And so this is a really great, great conference for you all to attend as a member of the pool. We do allow you all to have two attendees attend, and I know Brazos County is usually there, showing up with more than that. So we thank you all for your attendance at that conference. We also have another one of my favorites, the Healthy County Boot Camp Conference. This is where the Health and Benefit Services Team and our wellness consultants, they put on a very, very good wellness workshop or conference with great keynote speakers to influence and motivate wellness within the workplace. We call our wellness program, Healthy County, our Risk Management to Our Claims. As you all may or may not know, but if you have healthier and happier employees, they show up to work, you know, better. So we want to make sure that you're able to foster that culture within your workplace. We also have the County Investment Academy, Leadership 254, County Elections Academy, newly-elected officials trainings, and various other conferences throughout the year. We also have our CIRA Resources, so County Information Resources Agency. This is technology tools and resources for you all, where we provide website services, email hosting, and an annual county technology conference. And so this is new. It happened a few years ago that we started this, but it's a great conference for county information and resources for you all. We also are proud to offer cybersecurity training, and it is certified by the Texas Department of Information Resources. So of course, it does meet those Texas government code requirements for the county.
Are you telling us all this because you're fixing to go up on the membership dues?
No. I don't have...I don't manage that, so I'm not gonna be the messenger of that one. We also have our TAC mobilized listservs. So these are platforms where you're able to go in different offices. So as you can see here, auditors, constables, court assistants, there's a Healthy County platform, human resources, and more. But this is a platform where you're able to ask questions about whatever it is that you might have a question about. And other counties can also see that and participate and just allow you to get more information out there about something that you might have questions about. As Lisa mentioned earlier, Rita's not able to be here today, but she is your County Relations Officer. And so we do have four of those statewide: Alan Bristol, Rita Coaches, Trimmer Waitek, and Jay Madden. I always say, when in doubt, just call a crow. Rita is great. They are all former county judges, and they're there to assist you with anything related to county government or to our TAC services. So finding your crow, Rita manages most of that east Texas territory, but they're there to connect county officials with the resources that you all need. They also collect feedback to improve all of our TAC services that we provide. So they're really there to service and to make sure that your needs are met on the TAC side. We also have legal resources. So we have our Legal Department and a legal helpline. This is a great number to save in your phone. If you have any questions, they'll be able to provide you with printed resources as well as online resources for any issues that you are needing legal guidance on. Of course, it's not legal guidance, but they will give you those articles and literatures to help you manage that. And they also have legal guides on specific topics related to county government. This department is directed by Michael Pichinson, and the rest of the team members are there as well. They're all great. All right. I'm gonna turn it back over to Lisa for the next part.
Thank you, Clarissa. Okay, so we're gonna get back into the Risk Management Pool. I have Isaac Garcia with me. He is your Risk Control Consultant for Brazos County. So with our pools, I talked earlier about the different pools that we have. We have our Risk Management Pool. That's who Isaac and I work in that pool. And then Clarissa, Brian Neiser, are with your Health and Employee Benefits Pool. They also handle the Unemployment Fund Pool as well. So again, we're member-owned and governed. We're tailored to the unique needs of county government. All of our pools are very strong and stable. Isaac's gonna talk about some of the different services that you have with the different consultants with the pool.
Yeah, so like Lisa mentioned, my name's Isaac Garcia. I'm your Risk Control Consultant. Primarily, I work with your Risk Management Department, Lisa...I'm sorry, Leslie and Joseph over here. In the past, we've done quite a bit of services for you all. Last year, we just completed some drone surveys of your high-value buildings. This year, we've done some training for your road and bridge and maintenance departments as well. Our main focus is to put you all in a better state of risk management. So part of that, what we see is communicating to you all what the losses are. So we like to make sure that you all are aware of the losses. We do that primarily through your Risk Management Department when we talk about our property, our general liability, and all our other types of loss. So this is a map of our Risk Control Consultants. We also have our Human Resources Consultants. So in this area in particular, you have Lisa Edace, who's your Human Resources Consultant. She works primarily with Jennifer, trying to keep your human resources, what would you call them, risk mitigated.
Policies up to date.
Policies up to date, make sure that we're doing training for your employees, making sure that we understand. Just because Texas is a not-will state, we're just not terminating employees at will. We do it for just reason. So we have a lot of different services on that hand. We also have a law enforcement consultant in this area. It is now Craig Johnson. Craig is relatively new to the area. Before Craig, prior to Craig, we had Darren Jackson, who is the law enforcement consultant. So Darren's worked with your sheriff, with your chief deputy, as well as the director of your CSCD to mitigate losses in those law enforcement areas. As far as the pool goes, we also have a lot of different education opportunities that we have. Coming up, September 25th, we have a regional workshop over in Brenham. So if that interests you all, come, stop by, grab a scoop of Blue Bell and learn about Risk Management.
Isaac, where will that be?
That's going to be at...
Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds, yes, sir.
September 25th.
Yes, September 25th at the Brenham County Expo Grounds. And if that's something you all are interested in, the way those are designed, is there designed to be a one-day workshop?
I got extra hours to have this.
I'm sorry.
Something came in the mail, I actually have this.
Oh, okay. Excellent. Yeah, so those are designed to be a one-day workshop. We have topics ranging in each one of the disciplines: law enforcement, risk management, human resources. We will also be talking a little bit about cyber risk as well. And like I said, they're designed to be one-day workshops. So the idea is you drive in, attend the workshop, we provide lunch, and then you all drive back home and call it a day. In addition to that, we also have our Safety Equipment Program. So our Safety Equipment Program is where we take some funds and give you all...provide you all funds through Amazon now. Our program used to be run through Granger, but we've switched over to Amazon now, where we actually have a store that specifically provides safety equipment for road and bridge operations, as well as your law enforcement operations. So there's two separate stores. Your sheriff got a password for one store, some vouchers for one store, and then you all also got road and bridge funds and separate vouchers, each totaling about $9,000, a little bit under that. But those are going to be specific for safety-related items. So for example, we're not purchasing ammo, but if there's a bulletproof vest available, maybe some tourniquets or something else to reduce law enforcement risk, we can have those purchased through those funds. Do you all have any questions as far as the risk management services that we provide?
Commissioners, any questions for Isaac?
No.
Well done.
All right. We'll turn it back over to Lisa.
All right. And moving on to the Health and Employee Benefits Pool. And so in my role, the Employee Benefits Consultant, I'm here to assist with the renewals that y'all are receiving from the TAC Health and Employee Benefits Pool, plan design questions. I also help with employee training. So we are gearing up for open enrollment here soon, but that is something that we do attend, and we like to make sure that we come out and educate employees about the benefits that they have available to them. We also provide different other onsite trainings. So where to go for care is a really good one to help mitigate the cost for emergency rooms that we're seeing out within Texas. A lot of times, emergency rooms are advertising no out-of-pocket costs for the employees. So we want to make sure that with different trainings that we have for them, for employees, that we're making sure they're aware of where to go for care here in the Brazos County area. We also have a resource library for employees, as well as you all, for different resources, such as what are definitions of a health plan and more. We also have additional services. So we have a dedicated wellness consultant that is available to you all. Her name is Tasha Brent. She's unable to be here today. She's actually in Fayette County today. But she is here to help mitigate some of the claims costs that you all are seeing. So as a wellness consultant, she comes in to help tailor an approach specific to what we are seeing on the claim side. So for example, every year, we do a mid-year review in collaboration with your USI consultant, Brenda Cos, and we're able to go in, dive in on the claims that we're seeing, and then come out with some wellness strategies for you all. So for example, if we're seeing high chronic conditions throughout the year, we do have some programs that can help to tailor that for you all. We always advertise Healthy County as our Risk Management to Our Claims Cost. So within Healthy County, we not only have chronic condition management programs, but we also have other weight health programs. We have telemedicine options, behavioral health options available to employees, and much more. I will say that we have done...Tasha's come out and done a variety of different wellness workshops this past few months, and we have really been able to increase the participation in WebMD1. WebMD1 is y'all's wellness platform, and I know that the HR office has done a really, really great job at promoting the benefits, as well as the Healthy County Wellness Program. I personally really like the Five Keys to Wellness, and I think employees really, really enjoy that program. So I want to open it up to see if you all have any questions on the Health and Benefits side.
Commissioners? Mr. Brown?
I've got one question, and either you or Brian can answer this.
Absolutely.
Can you confirm to me that 100% of your compensation comes solely from the admin fee, and no other revenue sources are being leveraged?
Yes. So for consultants, we are not receiving any commissions or anything like that as a not-for-profit association. Anything that we receive in profit goes back into the plan to help offset some of the administrative costs and other fees that we are paying.
No, the question I ask is, all of your income for TAC, does all of it come from admin fees and from no other source, only admin fees?
I'm gonna defer to Brian on this one. He is our financial or our Associate Director of Finance.
Brian, thanks for stepping up.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Hello, Court. It's an honor to be here today. I'm the Associate Director for the Plan. I'm responsible for setting the rates for our prospective groups that we're quoting, and I'm responsible for the renewals for our in-force groups like Brazos County, and then the account management teams report up to me. And your question about revenue, the answer to that is no. We do share in rebates, and we collect a share of the rebates to cover our cost of administering the plan.
Well, you all were nice enough to meet with me individually today, and I appreciate that very much. But you know, it still sticks in my craw that we don't get 100% of our rebates, and it will. I mean, every time we meet, I'm gonna bring this up, and hopefully at some point, we can be at 100%. But we'll just leave it at that right now.
Well, Commissioner, we had a great meeting. So I welcome the opportunity to continue to have those discussions and talk about how we structure the plan and how we set it up. We feel like we have solved for the mystery of the PBMs and the manufacturers to ensure that the county is getting the lowest-cost drugs on the formulary. Because when you're talking about rebates, that equation is 20% of it is rebates, the other financial piece is 80% is drug cost. We're managing the rebates because we're identifying all dollars that are flowing dollars that are flowing into the plan from those drugs, and not just rebates, but any revenue, whether it's financial incentives or revenue from the manufacturer's third-party. We're responsible for getting all of that in with our contract.
Well, you and I both share in our hatred for PBMs.
Yes, we do.
And we discussed that. And when I was in the Legislature, I passed numerous bills in the House to reel in PBMs. And as I told you earlier, by the time it got to the Senate, you can never trust those senators, right?
No.
Every time it got to the Senate, you know, they would have 20 lobbyists show up, and they'd kill my bill every single time. So I know what you're up against with the PBMs.
We are constantly fighting the smoke in the mirrors, and we have retained a consultant, PBM consultant, who is attorney by trade, who got her PBM experience by litigating against the top three PBMs. And that's where she learned the secrets that take place behind those doors. And as a result, she helped us craft a 136-page contract that we use to manage the rebates and we use to manage to the lowest net cost and ultimately the lowest drug cost on your formulary. So maximizing the value to the county. And to your point, Commissioner Brown, when we, when Brazos County moved to the pool in 2018, we were sharing 50% of those rebates. As the rebates grew and as the county grew, we increased those rebates to 75%. With this renewal, we're increasing them to 80%. But we still are sharing in rebates, as mentioned earlier.
Next year, we'll hit you up for 90%.
Okay.
We'll just keep going up a little bit.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions on that subject? No, Clarissa, continue. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Y'all are probably very familiar with this website. This is our county.org website with all of the TAC resources. And so under Member Services, you'll find information for the Risk and the Health and Employee Benefits Pool, along with other services that TAC provides. We also have a calendar of events, so all of the different conferences for your offices, for TAC as a whole. We're advertising those and listing those there on our Events tab as well. We have different resources there. On the benefit side, you're able to see a list of the formulary related to the prescription drugs, as well as links to all of our portals on there. And then we also have some TAC communications, so our county magazine. And we also have a podcast. I think we're moving to a world where we're starting to hear more podcasts out there. So there's lots of great information that our team collaborates on that with. You can also find us on social media. So we have Instagram, Facebook, YouTube, and more. And then lastly, we have Texas County Delivers. So this is designed to improve the public's understanding of the value of county government. So they have a video library where they have lots of educational tools for schoolteachers that they can utilize to educate little ones on what county government is, what the different offices are. And we also have a new activity book that we have available to the counties as well. And lastly, this is our contact information. Again, as I mentioned, we do have an 800 number, and that legal hotline or helpline is really great. So I recommend saving that one. But I want to open it up to see if you all have any other questions for us.
Commissioners?
I just want to say, and I'm a little biased now that I'm on one of their boards. I'm on the Health Employees Benefits Board.
Yes.
And it has been a great experience. It has been very informative. I went in knowing nothing. And you know, the whole board has been wonderful. I was surprised that I got nominated. I don't know where that came from, but I'm glad to be there, number one, to represent Brazos County, but to be a part of the team and to learn what it is that you all do and how broadly you all serve the state of Texas, the counties in particular. So I said, I've totally enjoyed my experience and glad to participate and meet all of y'all.
Yes. Well, thank you, Commissioner Watson. We greatly value your participation on our board.
Thank you.
And we greatly value all's time.
Clarissa, I think we have one more question with Commissioner Brown.
We'd like for y'all to do a better job of lobbying because there's way too much unfunded mandates coming down from those weird people in Austin. So just.
Sounds good. We'll pass that along.
Just for the future, please.
I would be willing to bet that there are bigger lobbyists with deeper pockets than anything they can do.
Yeah, probably so.
So.
All right.
Commissioners, any further? Would y'all like us to call up Jennifer or Rihanna? Are we good? This is an opportunity to ask any questions this time for this workshop. I'm thankful that TAC sent the four of you here, Lisa, Isaac, Clarissa, and Brian. Would we like to call anybody up? Clarissa, do you have a party shot?
Yeah, I just have one more comment. I know that we will be addressing the Plan Year 2026 renewal. I believe it's next week in court on Tuesday. So you'll have more numbers and more information about the Health and Benefit Services, your renewal for Plan Year 2026. Didn't want to dive into that today, but that's coming for you all soon.
Oh, yay.
Perfect. Mr. Neiser?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to try to close it out real quick since I didn't have a role, and I'm buttoning in now and taking a piece of the role. I mentioned this to Commissioner Brown earlier, and I think to you, Judge Casal, that TAC is here for only one purpose, and that's to serve those who serve. And we've got that down-packed. You can walk in our building and ask anybody in that building, what is TAC's mission, and you'll hear every single time, we're here to serve those who serve. That's our purpose. They aren't making more counties. So we've got to do right by our members. And Commissioner Watson, we do value your participation aboard. I think the Health Employee Benefits Pool Board is the best board. I'll go on record for saying that, and that's because representation like you, Commissioner Watson. So y'all are well represented here by the county, but we're here for whatever the needs are. Whether you participate in the Health Employee Benefits Pool or in any of the Risk Management Services, you still have the association, all of these services available to you. And Commissioner Brown, I was not told that the membership dues are going up. This is just something, we try to make sure that everybody's aware of the services that are offered by TAC because there's so many. It just, it gets lost sometimes in the break.
If they did go up, I'm going to call you, okay?
Call me. And so last but not least, just wanted to thank you for your membership in the pool and the Risk Management Pool. We do appreciate that and value your participation.
Mr. Neiser, thank you, except I did not understand you when you pronounced my last name from where you're from. That was odd, but.
Do you see me stumble?
Yes, you did. You stumbled hard.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Inside joke.
Yes.
Get him, Judge Cackle.
Cotsol. Leslie, since we do have Isaac and Lisa here, Risk Management Commissioners, do y'all have any questions on that side of the TAC equation? I mean, we were called here today to workshop with TAC, and I'm thankful that all four of you showed up. I think the questions and concerns were rebates, prescription drugs, total cost, competitive bids, and benefits associated with our association with TAC. And just want to make sure that in 30 minutes, we got all those questions answered.
Thirty-one.
This is an incredible, efficient group that I am proud to be working with. And on that note, I will say this. For the listening audience and our frequent visitor here in the front with Scripture and Science, we will be meeting tomorrow in court for our regularly scheduled Brazos County Commissioners Court. We will start at 8:30. We have a 8:30 and 9:15 in the 10:00 AM court hearing. Also, for your viewing pleasure and attendance, we will have a workshop on camera security on Wednesday at 10:00 AM. That is the calendar that I know of till through Wednesday, which Wednesday will be a great day come midnight. Commissioners, any further comments? I thank you for everybody's participation. It's now 2:32 in Brazos County Commissioner's Court Workshop. Hold on.
I want to clarify that the workshop on Wednesday is for the court meeting dates, not the camera security.
Oh, excuse me. I got ahead of myself. Leslie turned red and was not ready with her presentation. The workshop on Wednesday will be to discuss our future calendar for the year 2026, with the options of going from four meetings a month to two, just for the listening. Aubrey, thank you for catching me and fixing my mistakes. I am still new to the gig and enjoying it immensely. But with that, it's 2:33, and we are now adjourned.